We're now going to call to order the Board of Commissioners' working session for November 9th, 2023. First order of business is to approve the minutes from the working session of October 12th, 2023. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are approved. We will take public comment after the presentation that will occur this evening, and so we're going to move right into the presentation. And please come forward and let us know who you are.
All right. Hopefully you all can hear me. Thank you all for having me tonight. My name's Farron Savitz. I'm the Zero Waste Advocate with Penn Environment. Penn Environment is a statewide environmental nonprofit. We believe all Pennsylvanians deserve clean air, clean water, and a safe and livable climate. As a zero-waste advocate, I've worked for the past several years with townships, with boroughs, with cities, all around Pennsylvania, on ways to reduce our waste and especially to tackle single-use plastics. I'll start with an overview of why tackling single-use plastics is necessary, why the proposed ordinance is so important. I'll go into a bit of what's been happening around Pennsylvania with your neighbors, and then we'll have questions, I believe. So to start, the main problem with plastic is that we use a ton of stuff, and a lot of the stuff we use is plastic that is made to be used once. You think about items like a shopping bag, a water bottle, a cup, a utensil, styrofoam, a bag of chips, candy. You use these items for just a couple of minutes, and then you throw them away. But whether that waste is going to a landfill, to an incinerator, or whether it's being littered directly into our environment, it's causing harm to our health, to our wildlife, to our waterways, our parks, our open spaces, and our communities. Every year, Americans generate about 35 million tons of plastic waste. That's not the plastic we use, that's just what we throw out. And less than 6% of that waste gets recycled. The vast, vast majority of the plastic that we throw out is going to a landfill, it's going to an incinerator, or it's ending up directly in our environment. That's a problem. I'm sure we've all seen images like these of a whale that washes up with plastic in its belly, a turtle with a straw up its nose, a bird wrapped in plastic. That's because plastic, especially directly in our environment, is a harm for wildlife. They mistake it for food, and so they choke on it. It can cut off their airways, it can stop them from getting their regular breeding patterns or finding their actual sources of food. Plastic contains chemicals that can be harmful to our wildlife. And this is a lot of how we think about plastic pollution. It is a direct threat and a direct harm to our wildlife. Some studies suggest that by 2050, there will be more plastic in the ocean than fish, which is crazy, that in the next couple of decades, there will be more plastic than fish in the ocean. But it's not the only problem when it comes to plastic. Plastic is also a problem for our infrastructure and our bottom line. Plastic bags especially clog our storm drains, our stormwater infrastructure. And as we see more and more heavy rainfall and flooding, storms, the effects of clogged storm drains become more and more dire, more and more severe. So either we're spending taxpayer money and resources to clean out these storm drains, to unclog them from these plastic bags, or we're spending taxpayer money and resources to deal with the effects of rainfall, of flooding, of storms. Philadelphia Water Department estimates that litter, especially single-use plastics, can double the cost of dealing with their stormwater infrastructure. In Pennsylvania, plastic is the most common form of litter. There are other problems with our infrastructure. Plastic bags especially, and certain other types of single-use plastics, either can't be recycled or incredibly difficult to recycle. If you put a plastic bag in your single-stream recycling, it can clog up sorting equipment and can make the entire recycling process more expensive, more time-intensive, and very inefficient, so that items that could get recycled end up not getting recycled because there are non-recyclable items like a single-use plastic bag ending up in our recycling. Penn dot estimates that it spends millions of dollars every year cleaning up roadside litter. And a study of some of the largest municipalities in Pennsylvania found that every year, they spend collectively close to $70 million. So if that's how much our best-resourced communities, our largest cities are spending to stop litter, to stop plastic pollution, or to deal with its effects, it is certainly a problem for our smaller communities, the ones with fewer resources to deal with this problem. Plastic also comes from somewhere. Plastic is made from fossil fuels. A lot of the time, that is fracked natural gas extracted right here in Pennsylvania. So every step of its lifespan, single-use plastics pose some sort of harm to our air, our water, our health. Fracking comes with a lot of air pollution issues, water pollution issues. There are pipelines all around our state to carry natural gas to be used for plastic production or for other uses. So this isn't sort of just an obscure waste problem. Plastic, our use of single-use plastics, is directly fueling our carbon pollution and our climate change issue. It's also a problem, we may have heard about the East Palestine train derailment last year, where a train carrying hazardous chemicals derailed just across the border in Ohio. That train was carrying hazardous chemicals that were being used to make new plastic products that are made in Pennsylvania and that pollute our communities, harm our communities. The last sort of harm of plastic I want to touch on is about health, to humans especially. Plastic, unlike an apple or a piece of paper, isn't going to biodegrade in our environment. Instead, it's just going to break into tinier and tinier pieces of plastic. And when they reach a certain size, five millimeters, it becomes known as a microplastic. Now, scientists have found microplastics in our air, our food, our water. At Penn Environment, we've tested over 100 rivers, lakes, and streams all around Pennsylvania for these microplastics, including the Tuckney Creek, right here in the township, as well as 50 of the cleanest, most pristine, and protected waterways in the state. We found microplastics everywhere that we tested. We've also tested tap water from four different cities around Pennsylvania. Again, we found plastic pollution in all these samples. It's not a matter of this being where there's visible litter. It's not a matter of if somewhere is clean visibly or if there's a ton of pollution around it. Plastic pollution is ever-present. And that carries with it health risks. Oh, should have swapped those slides. I'll go back one. It carries health risks with it, too. Plastic can contain chemicals, either in the creation of the plastic to give it certain properties, to make it softer, to make it water-resistant. But microplastics especially act sort of like sponges in our environment. They soak up pollutants that are already there, especially in water, but also in the ground. Things like PCBs, DDT, lead and heavy metals, PFAS. Wildlife eat these microplastics. Works its way up our food chain, and we sit at the top of the food chain. But we're also consuming these microplastics directly. We eat them with our food, we breathe them in, we drink them, so we are consuming tiny plastic particles that carry with them dangerous and hazardous chemicals. The World Wildlife Fund estimates that every week, just from living your life, you ingest five grams of microplastics. That's about the weight of a credit card or a single-use plastic bag. So every week, you are eating, breathing, and drinking a plastic bag's worth of plastic. The chemicals in these plastics have been linked to hormone problems. They serve as endocrine disruptors, they can cause reproductive effects, birth disorders, they've been linked to certain types of cancer. So they are definitely causing an impact, not just on our wildlife, but our health, too. So what do we do? If plastic is everywhere, if it's in everything, and if it never truly goes away, how do we stop it? The best thing we can do is to stop it at the source. If we don't create plastic products, if we stop them from getting people to people in the first place, then they don't become waste, they don't become litter, they don't become microplastics. We've been working at Penn Environment with communities all around Pennsylvania, especially in Montgomery County, on policies to get rid of some of the most harmful single-use plastics. Things like single-use plastic bags, polystyrene containers, plastic straws and utensils, the things that are in the proposed ordinance tonight. There's been a lot of movement so far. A little bit of history, I guess. Originally, a couple of years ago, there were the first plastic bag ordinance in the state was passed in Narberth in 2018. It was soon followed by Westchester and Philadelphia in 2019. But at the same time, the state legislature passed a preemption law, a ban on local plastic bans. That preemption expired at the end of 2021, so local townships and boroughs were given back the ability, the authority, to tackle this problem head-on with their own policies. And there's been an explosion in action. Since preemption expired at the end of 2021, we've seen two dozen policies either get passed or come into effect in Pennsylvania. These 24 policies all around include our two biggest cities, Philadelphia and Pittsburgh. They cover over 18% of Pennsylvania's population. And when they're all effective, they could eliminate close to 5,000 tons of single-use plastics every year. That's a lot of plastic that would otherwise be landfilled, would be incinerated, or would go straight to our environment. By our estimate, Abington uses over 20 million single-use plastic bags every year. So an ordinance like this one would have a discreet, concrete effect on our environment, on our lives, and on our health. As you can see, a lot of these are in your neighbors. You'll see, this isn't something that Abington is alone in. You're not doing this effort, sort of charging ahead blindly or without support from communities around you. Because this is an effort that many communities are working on, we've seen these policies in action, and we're seeing that they're more and more effective. A study on Philadelphia's ordinance saw that just in the first year of their plastic bag ban, plastic bag use at grocery stores fell by over 90%. Reusable bag use shot up. The amount of customers using no-bags shot up as well. But this isn't just about reducing the plastic, it's about reducing all waste. Penn Environment, we've developed model ordinances. If you look around at some of the policies your neighbors have passed or what's on the proposal tonight, you'll see a lot of similarities with our model. But the one key point I want to stress again is that this isn't just about the plastic. We recommend, as the proposed ordinance suggests, pairing a ban on single-use plastic bags with a fee on other bags given out by retailers. This fee, retailers get to keep, so it helps them cover the cost of switching from plastic to paper because paper bags are a more expensive alternative than the plastic. But it also serves as a reminder for people. If you have to pay 10 or 15 cents for a paper bag, you're much more likely to bring your own reusable bag with you or to use fewer bags the next time you go shopping. We've seen this in a bunch of cities all around the country. We're seeing it all around Pennsylvania. This is the most effective way to reduce all of our waste, all of our litter, and our overall footprint. And if you bring your own bag with you or don't use any bag, you don't have to pay anything at all, it's free. Other policies in the model that you'll see in the proposed ordinance, polystyrene containers, which are often called styrofoam. They're not recyclable, they're very bad for our environment and our wildlife and our health. We recommend banning them completely. Items like plastic straws, though, that are necessary for certain communities, like the disabled or the elderly, we recommend making them available only if someone requests them. Call it an on-request policy. So that you're not automatically handed a straw with every beverage. And if you need a straw, you can ask for one. No questions asked, you can get a straw, and you can use it if you need it. And so that is shown to be greatly effective at reducing the waste from these types of single-use plastics, too. There are other parts of our ordinance, there are other best practices in terms of enforcement, exemptions, rollout, but I think the best thing to do is to turn it over to questions now. And I'll leave this slide here, if you'd like, or I think the EAC also has some resources we could put up on the screen.
That is, if I can pull it up. There we go. Hi, my name is Karen McGarry Rosen. I'm the vice chair of the Environmental Advisory Committee. Some of my fellow EAC members are online. So the proposed ordinance, as Farron mentioned, is to eliminate plastic bags, as well as polystyrene, and plastic straws and stirrers. It would be a 15-cent charge for any paper bags. The paper bags have to be at least 40% recyclable. And there are some exemptions that are mentioned here, such as dry cleaning bags, the bags that you put your produce in, newspaper bags. And the enforcement thought is to enforce it in the spring of 2024. So Farron did mention about switching to paper bags. There is an environmental impact. The goal of charging for the paper bags is to encourage people to bring their bags with them, to bring their reusable bags with them. So the paper bags have, as I mentioned, an environmental impact. As Farron mentioned also, they use virgin trees to make the paper bags. So included in the ordinance is to have the paper bags be made of at least 40% recyclable material. So the ban and the fee combo, as I mentioned before, is for the encouragement of using recyclables. It's not like the businesses, in addition to the EAC, we don't want the residents to have to be charged for using bags. It's to encourage reusing the bags that they may already have. So we did a survey. It started in the March of 2022, and 627 residents responded. There were 25 non-Abington residents who responded to the survey. And some of the things, do you have reusable bags? 92% mentioned that they do have reusable bags. And when they do, do they use the reusable bags? 53% said that they do. And 36% said when they remember, it's possible that they had it in their car and they just didn't bring it in with them to the store. And if a nominal fee was placed on bags when shopping, which would you likely do? And the thought was 71% said they would bring their reusable bags. The timeline has started in 2022, but there has been a southeastern Pennsylvania Coalition for past single-use plastic bags, which started in November of 2021. The survey didn't get started until March of '22, and you see the timeline that brings us here today with the proposal to be adopted and started in March of 2024, if passed. So the EAC recommends finalizing and approving the ordinance, have a phased-in approach to spread awareness and education. We have already done a public meeting, October 23rd, which Commissioner Spiegelman, which I know he's online, he attended. And to enact it, as I said, in the spring of 2024. So some of the implementation recommendations is to have alternate paper bag products. There's a bag share at local businesses. If they, people who have extra reusable bags, they can put it in the bag share for people to use, so then if they happen to don't have any. The EAC has money in their budget from the rain barrel program that we can offer bags to anyone who doesn't have any bags, if necessary. So some of the other things are, as I said, to supply the township, ask residents for gifting reusable bags for those in need, and have stores donate bags. Some enforcement recommendations, it would be resident-led. Again, here's the violations, as mentioned before. And some suggestions for education. Here is, West Goshens has a really good education on their township website regarding plastic bag use. So one of the things that you don't see in the presentation, which I did mention at the public meeting, is we didn't go out to the businesses to ask them for their feedback. And the reason why we didn't do that, there are large companies in Abington Township, such as Giant, Acme, Target, you know, your big retail companies. And as being a part of this plastic bag coalition, we get the benefits of all the townships who went ahead and passed their ordinances. And they have done countless outreach to those large businesses, such as Acme, Giant, and they came back and said the same exact thing. If the township that the Acme, the Giant, the Target is located, passes a plastic bag ordinance, they will follow all local laws regarding that ordinance. So we didn't feel at that time to reach out regarding the proposed ordinance just because of that fact, that this has already been done. We're taking, you know, the information from the other townships that have similar large companies in their retail stores that already supply plastic bags, that they're already willing and able to comply. So I guess, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, we're going to open it up for questions. Thank you both for the presentation. We'll start with Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Schreiber.
Good evening, and thank you both for your hard work on this project. In my faith tradition, we believe that the earth was given to us as a gift, so we want to be good stewards of that gift to us, so thank you. One of my constituents reached out to me as I was sharing the information about this initiative, and she had a couple of concerns. First and foremost, the economic impact on consumers from a lower socioeconomic standpoint. So I think having a robust bag-share network is going to be key to mitigating any significant impact for those who can't afford the 15 cents per paper bag charge or purchasing their own reusable bags. So if you guys could really kind of partner, maybe find a system to incentivize having a bag share at local retailers, I think that would be key to adoption and, like I said, mitigating any economic impact there. Secondly, her concerns were on the carbon footprint impact of lower-quality bags. You know, so if we're now getting low-quality bags, then they have to be shipped, and they often come from overseas. So if you guys can think about that as well. And then also, the sustainability of cotton canvas bags and the cost, and just maybe some best demonstrated practices, recommended retailers where they could get bags from, locally, local companies that can supply the bags so that, you know, shipping costs and other carbon-impacted implementations can be diminished. So if you guys can speak to that, that would be great.
Understood. So just before, so just to let you know, I know annually at the pre-night out, the EAC generally has a booth. We didn't have a booth in 2020, they didn't have it. And I don't believe we had, we had participated in 2021. But in 2019, as we decided to talk about plastic bag use, we gave out canvas bags. We had purchased canvas bags and gave it out to the participants that came to our booth. Now, I know that there's a lot of people that probably are not Abington Township residents that attend that event and may not have known about that piece. But canvas is definitely the way that we are heading towards. It's not the, you know, the Target bag or the reusable Acme bag or CVS bag, et cetera. But I know, if you want to speak to the other resources, yeah.
Yeah, in terms of the quality of reusable bags, the ordinance has a pretty robust definition of what a reusable bag is. In a lot of other states or ordinances around the country, we've seen sort of thicker film plastic bags be used as a substitute. It's basically a single-use plastic bag, but made from more plastic. So we made sure to be intentional with definitions so that those bags would not be considered reusable bags. We also wanted to make sure some of the flimsier bags that don't have stitched-on handles, because often they are less durable, they don't last as long, and they're made of a lower quality, are also not allowed. So based on the definitions, both in the model and in the proposed ordinance, we should be getting pretty good-quality reusable bags that will last years and years and years. And in terms of environmental impact, that is the best bag someone can use. Plastic, from an environmental and health perspective, is the worst for our environment, for our health. Paper does have an impact, it's not as bad as plastic. But if you can take a bag that you use over and over and over again, that you bring from home, that is the best option because you're not creating new waste, you're not creating a new bag every time you shop. So I think we've done a good job with the definitions to make sure that's a problem we've addressed. On the subject of making sure people get reusable bags, that is an incredibly important thing. We've worked with a lot of communities on these bag-share programs. The city of Pittsburgh has been rolling one out with their bag ban that just went into effect. But part of the reason we have such a long sort of tail after it passes but before it goes into effect is to allow retailers to put out signs so that everyone knows what's coming, what the changes are going to be, and so they're prepared. And also so that people can get bags if they need them. And a lot of times, it is an opportunity for a retailer, especially the chains, to give out some reusable bags with their branding so that people are using a Wawa or a CVS tote bag or something like that. So part of having the long runway is to alleviate that issue.
Commissioner Schreiber? And then Commissioner Spiegel.
So I have a few questions and concerns, but I'm going to try to just ask some, and I might come back. So, and I certainly am very worried about the environment and the effect on animals and all of that, so I want to say that upfront. But, so I had a situation personally on Sunday where I used a reusable bag that I had in my car, something was leaking, got all over the bag, I had to throw the bag out. And in throwing that bag out, I put it in my trash bag in my kitchen. So now it's a cloth bag inside of a plastic bag. So in that situation, what would be the environmental impact on something like that? The cloth bag biodegrading and doing all those things as opposed to if I'd had a plastic bag in my car and I just used it, and then I could have reused that plastic bag because it wouldn't have been all soaking wet with, you know what I'm saying? Like, is that worse for the environment, really? The cloth bag having to go into the trash?
I mean, it would depend on a lot of factors. And I don't know the whole personal situation of yours, so I can't say for certain. But if that was a reusable bag you've had for a significant amount of time, then certainly the environmental impact would be less of using that reusable bag over time. And most reusable bags, you can wash them if they get soiled or dirty to keep them clean. So that's my recommendation, to just maintain and do proper upkeep of your reusable bags so that they do last, because most of them last for decades. A plastic bag in that scenario, you would have also had to throw away. And at that point, it can't be recycled. It would either end up in a landfill, an incinerator, or breaking the microplastics.
They both would have ended up in that? So is one easier or harder to biodegrade? That's what I guess I'm asking.
Well, the plastic will never biodegrade. Depending on what your reusable bag was made out of, it's hard to say, but.
Okay. And the other thing that I thought was curious in what you were just talking about is that we would still use produce bags and cleaning bags that cleaners? Yeah, they seem really bad to me. So I'm wondering why we would use those if we're getting rid of other bags that... I reuse plastic bags. I don't know that most people do, but I reuse them several times, sometimes. So, but like, dry cleaning bag, you can't because you kind of have to rip it and, yeah.
Right. So, you know, when we started with this project in the beginning of 2022 and drafted the ordinance, which was sent to Mr. Manfredi in the beginning of 2023, that we went through a lot of, do we throw everything in there? Or do we, to see what sticks? Or do we narrow it down to plastic bags, you know, at a minimum? So this is just the start. And I don't know if there's any other options for, say, dry cleaning bags. And I don't know, Farron, if you know that there's any other options. I know for the produce bags, you know, they do have some compostable bags. But the problem with compostable bags is if something was wet inside of it and, say, someone goes food shopping and then takes the bus on the ride home, that compostable bag that they just put their produce in and, say, starts to degrade, starts to open up in like 20 minutes. So it's not, you know, I personally have tried compostable bags for my trash, my kitchen trash. And if you don't take your trash out regularly, which, you know, I let it accumulate, if there's anything wet in there, it starts to break down, which then, that, it's not, you know, is it defeating the purpose? I mean, it's good that it's breaking down, it's not going into a landfill for years and years and years. But I think that this, like I said, this is a start to, and maybe for the future, there might be other additions, such as the produce bags, the dry cleaning bags, you know, those types of things.
And I can address both those items to some extent. And the situation's a bit different for each of them. So for dry cleaning bags, traditionally, they've been exempt from ordinances like these, partly because of difficulty of alternatives or operation of the business. But we're seeing more and more communities not include that exemption and ban plastic dry cleaning bags, or at least make the fee apply to the dry cleaning bags. Because there are reusable garment bags, there are some paper alternatives for dry cleaning. cleaning bags. So that is something that can be explored, tackling. Produce bags are a bit different because they're not given out at the point of sale, which is what the ordinance really impacts, is the bags given at the point of sale. So in terms of enforcement, in terms of logistics of an ordinance, a produce bag is much harder to tackle. And there are some health code issues around produce bags, it depends on the health code. But because they're often used to package raw meat or fish, often they're exempted for those health reasons. Personally, for my produce produce, I use a reusable, it's a little mesh bag, or I just put them straight into a cart. Because most fruits and vegetables, if you're going to wash them when you get home anyway, you can put it in your cart. So.
And styrofoam is in this ordinance or it's not?
Styrofoam is included in the ordinance. Styrofoam containers, like cups, plates, things like that. There are some exemptions with that too, like, again, for raw meat and fish, if it's on a styrofoam, it's packaged on styrofoam, sort of tray and wrapped in plastic outside of the township, or at a grocery store, that's exempted.
Commissioner Spahn, are you next? And then Commissioner Henry.
I want to make a couple of comments, and it's no disrespect to anybody, but I'm 70 years old. So I've been eating, drinking, and breathing plastic for 70 years, and I'm sitting here tonight. A quick story, I went into a Wawa around the corner from the office where I'm at, Frankfurt Academy. I got several items, went to the counter, said I could put them in a bag. She said, we don't have bags. I said, what do you mean you don't have bags? She said, you have to buy them. I said, are you kidding me? I have to buy a bag? You know, and we keep talking about this ordinance. Did we put in, did we draft this Board of Commissioners, draft an ordinance? We didn't draft anything, you keep saying that. We put the ordinance together, then it goes through this gentleman here, then we vote on it. Okay, that's like confusing to me. Okay, because I'm like, well, where was I when they did this? And one more thing is, who's going to police this? Our departments right now are strapped. We have so much important priority things that have to be done in this township. Lighting, roads, the structure itself, sanitary, storm, that's priority. To me, this is, this is, I'm 70 years old, I'm still sitting here. So I don't get that. Personally, I don't buy it. But that's me speaking. So I just wanted to make those comments.
Commissioner Spahn. Commissioner Henry.
I also have the question of who would be enforcing it on the township level. And I'm also interested in what this looks like for our smaller businesses, for our smaller, like eateries. You know, I'm, I know that Dunkin' Donuts and Wawa and everybody else, they've, they're, this is in place in other places, so they have things in place, like the corporate, the franchise, they, they know what to do. What do we do to facilitate this smoothly for our smaller businesses that don't have that infrastructure and to keep the costs down for them as well?
So my recommendation for enforcement is not to enforce it any differently than you would another part of the code. You don't need special people for enforcing a plastic bag ordinance. You don't need to be having someone looking over a business's shoulder every day or every week or every month. Most businesses will follow the law because it's the law, and they're good actors, and that's what they do. Our recommendation is if you have annual or quarterly or biannual inspections of retail businesses for other code enforcement purposes or health inspections or something like that, you could add plastic bags to the checklist just to see if they are following the ordinance. So that's one way of doing it, you can roll it into existing enforcement. Another option that a lot of communities go with is an aspect of citizen enforcement where you can just set up an email or an online form where if someone sees a business, they can flag it for the township. The township can then talk with the business, work with them to get into compliance. And again, that's part of why there's such a long runway for this, so that it's not something that you're just going to snap your fingers and the next day, everyone has to get rid of their plastic. It's something that you can work with the businesses on, there's a lot of education that goes into it. And then that's sort of crucial to making sure small businesses can comply, is having information on the website, like an FAQ, copy of the ordinance, sample flyers they can put up. A lot of communities already have lists of where businesses can get compliant bags. And so you can just, you know, crib from your neighbors, use the work they've already done, and make it so that your businesses now have the access to those lists of compliant bags. And that way, there's sort of that long education to make sure they can get in compliance.
Yeah, bags for sure, but also like food containers because of styrofoam and things like that, so I'd be interested.
Yeah, same thing with styrofoam. Those lists, a lot of communities have tackled styrofoam. We saw the first ban on, well, polystyrene foam in 2022, and I believe there are now eight total. So in the past two years, eight of them have passed, all of them in and around Philadelphia. So many of your neighbors have tackled polystyrene foam already, the information's out there for what businesses can do to switch over. So you can certainly, either I can work with the EAC to get that information, or they already have a lot of it, so.
Commissioner Vaughn? And then we'll go to the folks on line.
I fully understand everything that you're saying. I am concerned because it is an inconvenience, right, to make everybody have to provide their own bags. I have reusable bags, I forget them all the time. That's just a me thing. I also have four kids, that's a whole nother issue. But my, what I'm thinking about, not just the bags, but if we're saying, get rid of single-use plastic silverware as well, we just went through a pandemic where...
Silverware's not in the ordinance.
I thought that was listed with the fork, so there was a picture of a fork on one of the slides.
That was the Penn Environment Model ordinance, separate from the EAC's proposal.
Okay, because I was, so my question, my concern was going to be, we just went through a pandemic where we needed to be able to throw everything out and easily dispose of things that we had just used in places. So what would we do about those things that are single-use items because they didn't, you know, restaurants and businesses didn't want us using silverware, people didn't want to touch things? So what would we, what would we do in those places where there are single-use items that were put in place for protection for COVID and things like that?
So utensils are not in the proposed ordinance. The, what's in the proposed ordinance is the single-use plastic bags, the stirrers, coffee stirrers, and plastic straws, as well as the polystyrene. It does not include utensils. So as far as the draft ordinance, which it sounds like some of you may not be aware of the draft ordinance, the, what we sent to Manager Manfredi in the beginning of this year was something that we had drafted the EAC as requested by that office. So I had circulated it to President Hecker and Vice President Vehi, and also to my Ward Commissioner, John Spiegelman. So I know that at least those folks have seen the draft, and I know that we're talking about it. So to address, you know, the fact that the ordinance, where I keep saying draft ordinance or proposed ordinance, or Baron keeps mentioning it, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, let me just clarify, Commissioner Spahn. The purpose of tonight was to introduce the concept and have a conversation and see what the board felt about whether, what next steps, if any, to take. So there's no, we're not trying to rush this through, I mean, this is really a, here's an idea, let's talk about it. And if we're interested, there is a draft that we could review and decide whether it's something we want to mock up or change or whatever. But really, just an open dialogue here. You're welcome. Vice President Vehi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just really want to commend the work of the EAC. It's, you know, we're really, you know, it's a great benefit to have so many great volunteer committees that help us do our job and propose concepts for our consideration. And Karen, how long have you been a member of the EAC?
Since 2015.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for all your service and leadership. It's not easy to stand up here, propose a concept that's not universally, you know, liked. So thank you for taking the stand to make a positive difference in this community and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Commissioner Carswell, Commissioner Bowman, Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you. So the next time I fly to Colorado to visit my parents, which will be in 2024, the entire state of Colorado will have a ban in place. They have already implemented a purchase, which is essentially what we're doing, we're talking about right now. But comes January of 2024, you will not even be able to purchase a plastic bag. If an entire state can do this, if 20-plus municipalities in Pennsylvania can do this, if the two biggest cities in Pennsylvania can do this, I don't understand why Abington could not. I am so, so very grateful for the work of the members of the EAC behind this. They have helped us be leaders in our community and our county, and I'm very supportive of this. I will also add, because I like to look at what others are doing, and just across the river in New Jersey where my husband works, the local township of Delanco did a plastic films collection. And it was something in concert with a organization that makes, I don't even know what to call them, it's like plastic and other things that make the furniture and decking and things like that. They did this massive collection, and he came home and said, all right, well, let's collect all the plastic bags and films in our house. We're talking grocery bags that have a hole in it, bread bags, bubble wrap, dry cleaning bags, we don't get a newspaper in our house, but a newspaper sleeve, plastic shipping envelopes, you know, all of those things that come in little plastic bags from Amazon and elsewhere, produce bags, cereal bags. You would be shocked at how much plastic we collected, just the four of us in our house, and we don't even bring home plastic grocery bags. I think that we are, as a nation behind the eight ball in addressing issues like this, and this is just one of the many things we could be doing. So you have my full support behind this, and I hope that the EAC comes back month after month with more things that we could do to improve. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carswell. Commissioner Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think it's a short-term pain for a long-term gain. Sometimes we have to be reminded to do the right thing, and this is certainly one of those occasions. I think anybody who watches PBS knows the harm these bags are doing to the oceans and streams and other areas. Is it unfortunate when you go to the Acme and Sea Isle and you can't get a bag? Yes. But you learn quickly. And it doesn't happen three times, it will happen twice. But I support it also, and I thank you, Karen and Darren, for bringing it forward, and I think it should happen, and I certainly will support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, President Hecker. I want to commend my awesome Ward 11 neighbor, Karen McGarry Rosen, for all of your work on this. I mean, this is something we've been talking about. This is something, I know, we had wanted to get done back in the ancient days when I was Board President, but we had a little, we had a little pandemic to deal with. But the work that you've all done, and Karen, where you've led the way, it's really been remarkable. I have received a lot of feedback from residents. A lot of folks who, in fact, had been asking for this for years, who are thrilled to see that it's now moving forward. And again, I think, you know, it's pretty clear that I'm strongly supportive of this. But I did promise the folks, one resident in particular who reached out in opposition, I wanted to make sure that her, her comments and concerns were heard. I don't expect an answer on this tonight, but something to think about maybe as far as to answer when we, when we consider this for adoption next time around. Resident was concerned, resident actually echoed, echoed Commissioner Spahn's concerns that, you know, we have bigger fish to fry, there are, there are greater, greater concerns than this. We have a lot of, obviously, we have a lot on our plates, all township staff, every department has a lot on their plates. I do think that we're capable of handling these things in, you know, in parallel and not just sequentially, you know, walking and chewing gum at the same time. I think, I do think we're capable of doing that. But a particular concern of my resident is that she uses, like a lot of people, she reuses plastic bags religiously, particularly for things like kitty litter and whatnot. And, and she's now in a position where she's like, well, now, you know, folks like, folks like me who use the bags for kitty litter and, you know, other pet waste or whatnot, are now going to have to go out and buy plastic bag products to use instead. And I didn't want, again, I wanted to just share her concern out of respect because I think, you know, all voices need to be heard. And again, don't expect an answer on this, but something to think about as a discussion point for when we, this comes before us for a vote. But again, I applaud all of the EAC's work on this, so thank you so much. Way to go, Karen.
Thank you.
If it's all right, I can actually give some insight into the pet waste issue, as well as people who reuse plastic bags for their trash cans. And while it's great that some people take responsibility and reuse these bags, usually they're only reused once before they end up as waste. Personally, I've got cats, I use paper bags for my cat litter. But there are a ton of sustainable options out there. But the big thing I want to communicate is that the amount of people who reuse plastic bags is far smaller than the amount of people who don't reuse plastic bags. And so that when laws like these go into effect, in terms of sheer volume and weight of plastic, the amount you eliminate from getting rid of the single-use plastic bags at a grocery store far outweighs the increase in pet waste bags or trash bags. So there are some people who do have to buy pet waste bags or trash bags now, but the overall impact for the environment is much greater getting rid of the single-use plastic bags from a grocery store or from another type of retailer.
Thank you.
Thank you for that answer, Baron.
Are there any other comments or questions for members of the board before we open it up for public comment? And just, Karen, to remind you both, this is not a voting meeting, and so there is no vote being taken tonight. We will take this under advisement and figure out what the next steps will be based on the dialogue, and we'll be happy to follow up with you. But just want to be clear, we don't, we don't vote at this meeting, we're here just to kind of talk things through.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So is anyone in the room that wishes to speak to this?
I have been addressing blight of this nature for over two and a half years, and I've been treated with scorn. I have shown blighted photographs to Mrs. Schreiber over there, and she has shown no interest. This garbage here is a big problem at Raymour &amp; Flanigan, and it still sits there. The township keeps delaying the cleanup by asking for another 60 days, 60 days, and telling me, no, no, it's Raymour &amp; Flanigan asking for it. First of all, we need self-closing dumpsters. You don't want to ask anything of commercial businesses. We need self-closing dumpsters so that they're not open and going down like this all over the place. And many people use, I was an art teacher in Philadelphia, we lived on those plastic bags. I wove a purse out of plastic bags. I have made scarecrows out of plastic bags with kids. We use them all the time. If I didn't have plastic bags and discards to make vases and all sorts of masks with, we wouldn't have a curriculum. These plastic bags are very important. If anyone is going to pay, it should be the business owner. You don't ask people to pay a 5% tax. The business owner should openly provide bags, reusable bags. Everything is, people will take on the cost. You remember to bring 10 bags for your things at Target. You don't have them, that's 5 cents? No, everything is so overpriced, this is ridiculous. And I can't even live without these plastic bags. I saw somebody even make a dress out of plastic bags. These are, a lot of creativity goes into these plastic bags. And to tell me that you're interested in it, talk about first false appearances, Mr. Weingard, this has been there for a very long time. All I get is tentative court dates that never pan out. The stories I've been told, you don't show any interest in anything. Self-closing dumpsters, Boston Market closed because of rats. No self-closing dumpsters, rats everywhere, rats over here. We will have rats in our cars soon, just like they do in Philadelphia. You show no interest in the environment, or I wouldn't be coming back over and over again. This is a disgrace, the way you talk. You support big companies and you support billionaires, but you don't support the environment. You support big companies and you support billionaires, but you don't support the American people who are in your township. This is ridiculous what we have there. And I've been talking about it for two and a half years, and no one has ever said, thank you for coming in. Thank you for taking the photos. We want to help you. Now you avoid calls and make up stories. You are a disgrace as a board. And then you laugh, of course you mute, you mute Mrs. Lehman all the time in the middle of the sentence, and then you say you don't control it? Who's controlling it then? You're an outrage.
Anyone else wish to speak? Please come forward.
Self-closing dumpsters. Jesus.
Exactly. Please, please proceed.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Joe Rooney, I live in Arglesley. And Dennis, thank you very much, your outstanding comments. Mr. Henry, thank you very much, they were really great comments, and they're great questions that I didn't hear addressed, and that would be great. This is a discussion in here about a potential ordinance, but I didn't hear any discussion at all for the benefits of plastics. And I don't understand how you can make a decision, say, we're going to arbitrarily ban something without a discussion on what are the reasons that it's here. And I'm not an expert, but I have done a fair amount of traveling and looking around the world, and plastics bring unbelievable benefits as far as health, convenience, and also energy savings. If you're not carrying, if you're not transporting a glass bottle from point A to point B, then that weight saving is gigantic. It lowers the costs of everything, so there's an economic benefit to that. And I, I can't speak to it, but I don't understand why the board doesn't have a counter presentation that at least says, well, this is what the benefits are, and this is what the costs are going to be if you enact this. The second thing is, if it's such a great idea, then people should voluntarily do this. So instead of passing an ordinance that puts a gun to somebody's head, then mount an education campaign. I'm sure Ms. Carswell was talking, and by the way, she's a great fan of fracking and can tell us all about the great effects of fracking in Colorado, too, she mentioned in a meeting. But she's probably lives without plastics right now, and she can tell us, how's, what's it like? What's the alternatives? Every box of cereal you open up's got a plastic bag, your chocolate chip cookies, your, your kids, everything you have is a bag in it. It facilitates freshness, it facilitates longevity on the shelf and getting it into your house, and then you can store it there, too. I mean, every trash can probably has, has a single-use plastic bag in it. That's unbelievable for sanitation in the house. And I'm not an expert, but I'm saying, why aren't we discussing this part of it at all before you vote on an ordinance?
Because none of those things that you just mentioned...
Wait, I have five minutes.
You'll have it, and you can stop the clock, because none of the things you just mentioned are contemplated in the ordinance. We're not talking about plastic bottles or food, I mean, you heard of all the things that would not be included in this because they're not point-of-sale considerations.
We started out with a discussion, talked about global warming, talks about plastics in the ocean, and we're just Abington Township. And you're talking about, you bring all of that and then say, we're going to ban plastic bags, straws, styrofoam. There's some reason why they exist, there's some cost reason, some business reason. My whole point is, you can either have a punitive command and control approach where we tell you to do this, or you can educate people and let them freely choose and decide what to do. And if, in fact, that's a great idea, it'll sell itself. It'll economically sell itself, it'll health-wise sell itself. If it's not, and you just want to point out and say, you will do this because we say so, you're not an expert. These folks are certainly nice volunteers, but they probably know very little more than anybody else does, and watching PBS isn't, isn't going to tell us the truth. That's my, I have a faith tradition, too, and it values truth, okay? And we need to be humble enough to know that we don't know everything when we go and we do this stuff. So a couple of things. Who will enforce it and what costs? We have a township full of ordinance that are unenforced right now. Here's an ordinance right now, and it says you can't ride a bicycle on a sidewalk. That's 108-1 point D. There's another one in here that says you can't use water pistols at public events. I mean, all these ordinances already exist. You're going to put another one in that's going to be unenforced, or what? We're going to use the police? Then a gentleman said, oh, we're going to, we're going to use it with people self-reporting. So I remember when we were sailing, we were living in Australia, they had a 1-800 number for neighbors to call in and report their neighbors for doing stuff. So my wife and kids and I, we made a joke, it was 1-800 rat on your neighbor, you know? So that's what we want to do now, is give another opportunity for, you know, for our Gladys Krabich to call in and report on somebody, and then who's going to do what about it? I don't know the answer to that, but it ought to be discussed. If health, hygiene, dog waste, what are people going to do about that stuff? I mean, he says there's some answer, but who's living it right now? I don't know. You see folks walking around all the time with, with their hands with dog waste in it, it's just terrible. I like free, free, free market. The other one is, somebody mentioned using a reusable bag for 10 years for your clothes, for your, I don't know, I mean, I just heard that. But every reusable bag has to be washed. So you're getting rid of plastic bags, and you have to talk an increase of water usage and an increase of detergent. That's an honest discussion. And I'll leave it with this. Macbeth Act V, it's a wonderful thing. Has anybody read Macbeth? Anybody familiar with it at all? Okay. And this is not to be an insult, so I'll drop one word here. And it's a reference that says, it's a tale told by a blank, you can look it up, in Act V. It's full of sound and fury and signifying nothing, okay? You're doing this, it's all form and no substance. It'll make absolutely no impact on anybody other than a political move that says, look, we got the Democrats in Abington decided to ban plastic bags.
Look at the garbage.
Thank you.
No self-closing dumpsters, no... You don't allow free speech.
I allowed you five minutes of free speech. We'll go to Zoom.
Not a free speech, we're giving the least amount...
Laura Lehman.
Ms. Kavel, please be quiet, I'm going to afford other people the opportunity to speak.
Laura Lehman Metabruck. So I want to thank Karen and the EAC for working so hard on this. I do appreciate what they did, and thanks to Barron for, for coming. They really did do a lot of work. They're not unknowledgeable in this area, and I appreciate the information that they're passing along. My, my concerns tonight are a little bit different. So, you know, one of the concerns is, Mr. Hecker, you said that this is a working session, this is not a voting meeting. But at this working session, you almost always take some kind of, you won't tonight, I'm sure, but you almost always at the working session take some kind of consensus, which, which is essentially a vote, to move the item forward to the commissioners or to keep it and work on it later. So can you tell me, Commissioner Hecker, what the, is it not allowed to vote in this working session? Are you allowed to vote?
We don't take formal votes in the working session.
Okay, so how is a consensus different than a vote?
Ms. Lehman, do you have other comments about what the presentation was tonight? I'm not going to do this with you.
You mentioned tonight that you weren't going to vote, so this...
I mentioned tonight to remind the folks who are here for the first time at the working session that we don't take formal votes at this meeting.
Okay, and I want to understand what's the difference between a formal vote and a consensus?
Listen, I'm not, I'm not doing this. So if you have further comments about the presentation, you're welcome to make them, otherwise we're going to, we're going to stop.
I'm asking, Commissioner Hecker, I'm asking you, if you are not taking it because you've decided not to take any consensus or any kind of vote, or are you not taking it because you don't take votes at a working session? That's what I'm asking.
We don't take formal votes at a working session.
And I'm asking you now, what's the difference between a formal vote...
And again, Ms. Lehman, do you have further comment about what was presented tonight? And if you do, please make those comments, or we will move on to the next resident.
I, I do, but you are interrupting my comments...
No, no, you brought me into this to ask me the same question six times in a row. And so you have two minutes and 17 seconds left to comment on the presentation, and I invite you to do so.
Didn't understand it, and that's why you didn't answer it correctly. So I explained it. And so clearly, you just don't want to answer. It's a very simple question, what the difference between a consensus and a vote is. Okay, you don't want to answer it, but the public needs to see that. That's who our leader is. So Commissioner Spiegelman actually brought a question from another resident who disagreed with his position, and then actually worked almost to not get an answer. I thank Barron for stepping up and answering that. But Commissioner Spiegelman kept saying, well, you don't need to answer it now, you don't need to answer it now. But before she gets to the next meeting, that resident has a right to have learned at this meeting what she asked her commissioner to find out for her. That's what your job is, to help your residents through this governmental muddle that we have. So Commissioner Spiegelman, you can thank Barron for saving you on this. That was not okay. That's not the way in front of people. So, or for your residents. That's against the residents you don't agree with. So the other thing that came up tonight is that there has been way too much for anybody to actually read. Nobody should be here at this meeting without having read that ordinance. And the ability to read all of the things that you've been given, including this budget that you had no formal explanation for, and tonight you had, literally, tonight was the first time that you saw it, but you had the ordinance and nobody had time to really read it. Maybe one or two of you did, okay? But most of you apparently did not, according to the discussion. And there is too much for you to read to actually even know what you're passing in this township. And you're not passing, reading it and then passing that information on to your residents.
Ms. Lehman, your time has expired. Thank you for your comments.
Kaki Evans, you're unmuted.
Hi. I wanted to point out that in the survey that the EAC did for this, how many responses were there? Well over 600, I believe. And that's a pretty good response. I know for the 20, for the comprehensive plan, I think we were about 600, you know, but I think we got even more, if not the same amount. And I think that's pretty good, that a lot of residents overwhelmingly, you know, said that in their responses that they, they, because there was some discussion tonight about whether it's a mandate or it's voluntary, but in the responses in that survey, it said they would be more likely, if it was mandated, to use it. So, you know, I get that making it voluntary, it would be the nice way to go, but if people are more apt to do it when compelled to do it, and I think we all understand, most of us anyway, understand the compelling reasons for this, I think that's, you know, a lot of kudos. So I also want to ask a question with, if I did takeout, like when I do takeout from downtown Philadelphia food, I've noticed that I get a green combustible bag. Is that allowed in this ordinance, or is it going to be a paper bag? Are combustible bags really combustible? That's a technical question, so we could talk about it later, but I wasn't clear when I looked at the ordinance about that.
Okay. Well, thank you, Kaki. And we will definitely get you an answer to that question. So I don't see any further public comment. Commissioner Spiegelman, is that a legacy hand?
No, President Hecker, it is a, it is a new...
Sadly not.
Very, very brief hand, but I, if, if you will, if you will, less than 30 seconds, I swear to you.
Okay.
All right. I very clearly said that I didn't expect an answer tonight because I didn't want to put our, our presenters on the spot, but that that's something that they could consider to answer next time when this comes to us for a vote. This was an example by the previous, not the previous, previous was Kaki, but the next to previous speaker of either intellectual dishonesty or active gaslighting, or just not getting what's going on. But I'm not having it. Just wanted to clarify, thank you, my 30 seconds is up.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. I want to thank both of our presenters this evening for a thorough and detailed overview. You've given us a lot to consider. We will be taking this under advisement, and we will be back in touch with what the recommended next steps will be, okay? With that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. We are adjourned.